I'd like to call the meeting to order and Jay will read his reading. I think this will be the last time I have to read this too. So in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Maine, in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, has an act to read section G1 MRSA subsection 403A, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state of emergency due to COVID-19, this business meeting is being held virtually through Zoom. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the manico.org YouTube channel. Due to the nature of this meeting, we will not be using the, or assuming, the microphone. The viewing audience will be muted except during the identified portions of public comment for this meeting. If you have any questions or comments, we respectfully ask that you contact the central office or email the superintendent or any other board member and an answer will be provided as soon as possible. Again, we thank the public for this. Roll call, all attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. When your name is called, board members, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes, approved, no, disapproved, or abstained. Please say here, I'm going to go right to the roll call, please say here, and be sure your audio is turned up to confirm that I can hear all the other board members because we are using an owl today, so it's a slightly different format. So, roll call very quickly. Kim? No one are going to use.
I'm sorry, I'm here, clear.
Wendy?
Here.
Dane?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Melissa?
Alex?
Yeah.
Patty? Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yeah.
Sean?
Gary?
Here.
And David Twitchell. Okay, due to the fact that later in the meeting, we may not have a forum to vote, we're going to start tonight's meeting with number six, the action discussion information item, so that we can do the voting while we do have a forum here. So let's start with the first one. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of June 2nd?
I move to approve the minutes of June 2nd, 2021.
Good.
All right. Kim?
Nice.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Dan? Rebecca? Yes. Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
So six yes and two abstentions. Is there a motion to accept the nominations? And is there a motion?
Second.
Who made the motion? Rebecca. Good, a little bit quick, so. Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the nominations of first probationary contract teachers?
I move to accept the nominations of first probationary contract teachers.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept the second probationary contract teacher?
I move that we accept the second probationary contract teachers.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Is there a motion to accept a teacher resignation?
I move to accept the teacher resignation of Manchester L.I.T. school Christine Johnson with regret.
Second.
Any discussion?
The best you can do.
All right. Kim? Yes. Wendy? You may have lost.
Yes, if you could, I don't know if you can hear me.
All right. Kathy? Yes. Alex?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Is there a motion for the acceptance of the competition declaration of votes?
That we accept the competition and the declaration of votes as printed in the mark. It's printed in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? Kim? Yes. Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Alex?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
So there is a picture page that is coming around for this particular one, so we can pause for just a minute so that people can sign. We're trying to just play too well. And I'm first. The following. What's that? Yes, each one. Take those five there. No, I would do that, yeah. Those are the signatures. Oh, well, no, that's probably.
Is this the same? Or so. It's probably.
Yes. Yes, the five. Well, I guess the last one, make sure there are five. Picture what? There are five, but they said they were just five, and I lost that. I was like, he counted five, can't change his channel. All right. Yep. Okay. So is there a motion to approve the assessment warrants and installment schedules?
I move the warrant for assessment tax and the assessment schedule and notice of installments for each member municipality prepared by treasurer for this year July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022 be approved and issued in form presented to this meeting and that the treasurer be authorized and directed to deliver to each member municipality its warrant for assessment tax and its assessment schedule and notice of installments. Second.
Any discussion? He's already taken them, but we got all that. Maybe I have a good shorthand. So Kim, you're first.
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
I didn't hear what we're voting on.
So, Dave, it's the warrant assessments that go out to the town that have the kind of the budget figures for the town with their installment payments for the schools.
Oh, gotcha, okay, yep, yes.
Kathy? Yes. Alex? Rebecca?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And hold on, we're just going to make sure, because we have to mark who's here, who's remote, who's not attending, and then the yeses, nos, and abstentions. There was all yeses, so that's.
I didn't vote if that makes sense. I was going to say, I only got six, I'm eight. Two people weren't called.
Oh, did I miss?
Did Rebecca vote?
Yeah.
You just do it again.
Right, so Betty, you're right, Betty's not on here. Well, no, it's just, it just. So Betty gets.
I don't see me getting a vote, would she be allowed to make a vote? Somebody else can agree on it, or whatever. Well, how about that? Have some more things to decide.
So Betty, what's your vote?
Yes. For all of us. You got to vote. I'm sorry, Jackson, sorry. I think that's over.
So two, two, two.
But they're different. It's all new paperwork from the lawyers this year. Totally different. Whoa. I was going to say. Is it all in our package?
Right, because this is the actual. So it did, yes.
You must have shorts in your.
Allison, yeah, that is right.
You write it out in the email, we noticed mine's.
Oh, that's interesting. I was wondering why it went beyond the line.
It's basically mine, it's Andy. My signature is from yours. Yes, I got it. Imagine, I mean, you know, everybody at school.
Andy, did you tell him that's a lie?
I did, I did do that, I think. But penmanship, not my forte, never was, never will be. I'll tell you what keeps today though. You know, you have losing. My daughter gets screwed up just doing a signature on anything. My grandchild. Can sign? Yes, because you wore stuff.
Their grandmother taught them.
Yeah. How old school are you going?
Oh, yeah.
You got to make sure we have eight this time, Rebecca. You got to count, that's five. There's still some of them. You have a lot of time, I could teach you. Penmanship here. And I do write these years, I do.
Is that the last one?
I haven't gotten the.
The eight? Yep. Okay, the next one, do we have a motion to approve of transfer funds? Oh, we don't. Oh, all right. Let's get rid of that. It's not needed, so we don't need a motion.
I move that we authorize superintendent by the proper necessary application forms to participate in any act and all expected for performance for RSU 38 and otherwise we authorize representative for and of RSU 38. Nice and loud, one and twenty-two.
Any discussion? Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
And Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
No.
There a motion to authorize superintendent to hire and accept recitations?
I authorize the superintendent to hire and accept recitations in consultation with the chair or vice chair during the summer.
Second.
Any discussion?
We don't have any. No recitations live hires. Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Alex? Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
All right. That's the business part, now we're going to go on to fun part. So, the first thing that we're going to do tonight is recognize some folks who have been in RSU 38 for many, many years, and every one of these folks have played an important role in bringing our district to the point that we're at now, which is an awesome district with a very well-known reputation across the state. So we thank you for all that you've done for our district over the years, and it's been a lot of years. So if you're on Zoom, if you could just give away, when I say your name, I'd say you're here, but it looks weird at all. I was going to ask you to stand up, but I guess we won't do that. So, so the first one is Sue Cretian, who's an ed tech, she's been here for 34 years. Then we have Kelly Frye, who is the high school Spanish teacher, she's been here for 26 years. Carla Hallett in food services for 37 years. Nancy Harriman, director of curriculum instruction and assessment, she's been here for eight years. Cynthia Coos, an ed tech for 20 years. Mary Ann Libby, an ed tech for 11 years. Nancy Martin, elementary phys ed teacher for 27 years. Linda McGuire, administrative assistant at Wayne Elementary School for 24 years. Victoria McMullin, a special ed teacher in our district, she was at the middle school, she ended up at Mount Manchester, she's been here a total of 29 years. Sandy Nunes, who's been a bus driver for us for 24 years. Susan Traut, also was at the middle school and the high school media center for 16 years. And Fred Webo, who has been a custodian here for six years. So thank you all very much for all of your dedication to our district, we really appreciate it.
I did the math right, it means 264 years of service.
Wow, that's a long looking, a lot of years.
We'll miss you all.
Yes.
Now we've come to the point where we're going to say goodbye to some of our board members who've been with us for a while. So we're going to start with Wendy. Wendy Rovelin has been on the board for five years, and first of all, Wendy, I'd like to thank you for all of your service during those five years, we really appreciate it. And I especially appreciate how you always were prepared and very attentive to details. You kept us on track where we should go, so I really appreciate that. Your hard work and your devotion to the students in this district has not gone unnoticed. We really appreciate everything that you've done, you'll be missed, and we all wish you nothing but the best as you start your next chapter. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The chapter, the chapter is Wendy's writing a book.
Iceberg.
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 Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next one that's leaving us is Gary Carr. So Gary, I've known and worked with you for all of your seven years of service to this board. During your first two years, I was sitting on the other side of the table, and I just want to let you know that during those first two years, Gary, every meeting I came to, I was very nervous that you were going to ask me a question that I wouldn't be able to answer, and luckily, it only happened a couple of times, so thank you, but I was still nervous every single meeting, so. But what I do want to say about that is, the questions that you asked then and the questions that you continue to ask are really important questions. You asked hard questions, and we really appreciated that. The questions forced us to think about things that we may not have thought about if you hadn't asked those questions, so the way that you would think and bring up items that we needed to hear and talk about was very important, so we really appreciate that. So on behalf of the full board, we're truly grateful for your commitment to the students in this district, because we know that you do care very deeply for the students in the district, and we wish you all the best, and we're hoping that you will continue to ask us those hard questions that we need to hear. So thank you, Gary. And now Alex is reading this as well. So Alex, Alex has also been a person that has asked a lot of questions throughout his time on the board, and this has been a good thing, because it's really been fun watching him ask his questions and watching him grow as a board member and a contributor to our community. Alex, your enthusiasm and your desire to learn has really been impressive throughout all the time you've been on the board. So on behalf of the board, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and we assure that you will do very well. So thank you. Anyone else have any comments or anything they'd like to say to me?
Hey Jay, could we do like a quick picture of us three?
Oh, of course, yes.
Yeah.
Of course. I'm going to do it right now, I know you're on a time plan.
Right, I guess, that's my question.
You guys.
We're going to stand on here.
Yeah, why don't we go over there? You want to take the picture for me? You got, I know you're saying. So what you had that look like? No, not me.
Otherwise it's backwards. No, not close, no. Can you go there?
You have a better background.
You got like chairs, you're going to have boards or something growing up on your heads with the chairs. The same. I'm getting nice.
I feel like you're.
Thank you. Good luck to the girls. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Kim.
So there's another, there's a few more people that we want to recognize tonight, and the first one is Dory Tripp. I believe Dory is here on Zoom, yes, she is waiting. So, on May 19th, the Reedfield and Manchester music teacher, Dory Tripp, received the Maine Music Educators Association Educator of the Year award. It's a pretty prestigious award to win, and the recognition was shared in front of her peers. As we are all aware, the pandemic has been difficult and has significantly impacted music programs. Dory has been on a cart going from room to room, delivering her curriculum without the ability of playing instruments, singing, and movement activities. Just as our students have been, she too has been resilient and creative in adapting her curriculum to meet the state guidelines. Dory has implemented a curriculum which integrates science and social studies concepts in her music curriculum. She uses technology to take her students on virtual trips around the world to experience the variations of instruments, their sounds, and cultural music. This exposure has been beneficial to all our students. Mrs. Tripp is a highly motivated, visible, collaborative, and dedicated professional who is committed to improving the culture and learning within our school in a positive manner. We'd like to thank Mr. Adam Scarponi for nominating Mrs. Tripp for this prestigious award, and congratulations, Dory. Would you like to say something or not?
I guess I would just say thank you so much, that means a lot, those kind words, and certainly, this year of all years, it is very humbling to receive this recognition. It was certainly difficult, I know my colleagues, and not just myself, but my colleagues as well, we really had to kind of reinvent the wheel this year, and we certainly couldn't have done it without the support of our administrators and just the collaborative culture of our schools, so I have to say that, you know, having gone through that, I feel very lucky to be working for various schools, so thank you again.
Thank you. So the next person that we'd like to recognize is Hope Lord, is Hope here? No? That's okay, we can still recognize her. So on Saturday, Maine first, the art teacher from the middle school, Hope Lord, was honored as Maine's middle level art teacher of the year. Hope is a fantastic educator, she regularly collaborates with staff across the school to best support the school's overall mission and culture in order to meet our students' needs. Hope seeks opportunities to collaborate and connect with our larger community so that our students can learn and experience art in new and unique ways. Just recently, Hope was awarded a grant for the Maine Department of Education's pilot program to collaborate with textile artist Pamela Moulton to create a virtual artist residency program. Hope volunteers her time within the district in order to find ways to reach all students and meet their needs artistically, academically, and emotionally. As a leader, Hope has also thrived, having taken on multiple leadership roles at nearly every capacity. There is no one more deserving of this award, and we are so proud to have such a fantastic caring educator running our art program in the middle school and in our district, so thank you, Hope. And we have one more that we want to recognize, that's Adam Scarponi, is that in here? No? So, last fall, Mr. Scarponi was notified that he was the main music teacher of the year. He's a leader throughout the middle school building, his energy, collaboration, and student focus have helped to create a school environment in which everyone feels safe. District-wide, he's worked collaboratively to support the work from the K to 12 perspective. Mr. Scarponi is incredibly motivated as an educator and will often come into work as early as he can, leaving as late as possible to ensure the well-being of his students. His drive and self. His drive and selflessness are among the best Kristen LeVette has ever seen in anyone she's worked with. So we're very fortunate to have Adam in our district and be working with our students. So thank you very much, Adam. Did I have something real quick? Of course, it's not very often, I heard this in one of the high school presentations, and I just, I thought it was really nice work. It's not often that a school can say they have the best in the state, but we have the best in the state with some of these people. So I just have to brag about that, because it's not often that you get that recognition that they consider you the best at what you do. So, I just think, you know, saying that to Dory, Hope, and Adam, you guys are the best in the state and we are very lucky to have them at our end. So, just have to add that into my point of view, so. Thank you, Jake. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll move on to the presentation for Bus Fetter. No, not happening tonight, she's going to do it first meeting in September. Okay, my little guy, the old... All right, so that's gonna happen. And we can't do the executive session, because we don't have an eleven-hour board. We don't have a forum at this point, so we can't do the executive session. But I will reach out to our board members, Kathy and I are gonna meet, and we'll reach out to all the current board members to get their feedback from the self-assessment and to help kind of gather ideas and information to be able to use at a board retreat. And we will set a date, a mid-August date for a board retreat, and we'll send out some peeler ones and multiple dates. So I'll work with Kathy for all of that stuff, so.
So who would be official, the public official?
That would be us, the school board.
The school?
Yes, yeah. So one other, a couple more things before we adjourn. Betty had a report from the Awesome Bear Society?
Yes, and about the only business that took place was the upcoming golf tournament on Sunday, September twelfth, and at the Manchester Augusta Country Club. So if you play golf, check out the Awesome Bear Facebook page, sign up to play golf on that day. And I also volunteered us for something. And so I thought that it would be good to tell you what I volunteered you for. We're going to be auctioning off a lot of baskets, for example. And so I volunteered the school board to make a basket for a silent auction, a leaders' choice basket, so that if you can donate books and Amazon gift card, Barnes &amp; Noble gift card, Dunkin' Donuts. So it's good to be drinking coffee or something, or eating a doughnut while you're reading. Tea, you could bring in some packets of tea or coffee, hot chocolate, chocolates, of course, because it's nice to eat chocolate while you're reading. Or cookies, any of those things, I can make up into a basket that will be auctioned off at the golf tournament.
So do you have a date, the way you leave these items by?
Like, I don't know, I don't have a calendar, so that's my... But it would have to be like the meeting before September twelfth. And I don't know, do we have meetings yet for next year?
We kind of tentatively have them, but we haven't put them down kind of on paper, just kind of on a calendar. We can say the first meeting in September?
Yeah. And we're having a board...
Okay, the first meeting in September.
And if we have a board retreat before that, I can remind people, and then, and then, if I remember, I'll remind people.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, yeah. Okay, any questions or anything for Betty? So one more thing that I wanted to add to the agenda was to just have a short conversation about school opening in the fall and what that's going to look like, now that the governor has lifted the expectations around social distancing and masks and, you know, I've been hearing from a lot of other schools what they're doing, so I just wanted to make sure that people in our district knew what our plan was for opening school in the fall. So, short, short version is five days a week, regular time, so the, what was it? Eight to two-thirty, the regular day. The, now that social distancing is gone, I say gone, is a suggestion, like that's what we better remember, the state is saying these are suggestions for you, that we will be fine with states. I was a little worried that we might have to do the flu testing, but that's optional now, so I'm not going to be asking parents to make a choice about a weekly, you know, basically nasal swab there. I just feel like that we're pushing things a little bit by doing that, especially young children. So, but it's gonna be open full-time, that kind of solves our transportation issue in terms of number of students on the bus. We're all set with cafeterias now as well. And I've been telling that to principals all the way along, basically since back in May, saying, get ready, this is what we're doing moving forward. But now that the state emergency is off and such, we're pretty much back to a normal routine and stuff. And any little pickups, I have no doubt that we can handle them because of the amazing job that we were able to do this year. So, I feel like we're in really good shape, so. So what about masks? Masks will be optional, because that's what it is from the state at this point. So, we'll work on making sure that whoever wants to wear a mask feels comfortable wearing a mask, and whoever feels like they don't need to wear the mask, whether they're vaccinated or not, is also comfortable so that there's no shame and blame on anyone's part, whether you wear the mask or don't wear the mask. That'll be the education that we do, because we don't want anyone to feel bad about that, so. So, Chris, then?
What about elementaries, since they cannot at this point, maybe by then they can be vaccinated? Are there any guidelines?
They have not come out, the state said that they would be sending us suggestions, but again, they're suggestions. So once I get those, I will talk to Kathy about them, make sure that you guys see them and such. But I think we're gonna have to make it optional, parents will have to make the decision. And if they let us know at the school, you know, we expect our child to wear the mask, then we can help with that. But we're not gonna be checking masks at the door and that kind of thing. So, it'll, you know, whatever families decide, we will help support, you know, as far as school is concerned, so. That's kind of, that's my stance, and I think that's, that's the stance I kind of get from most of the people I talk to right now, so. Thank you, Karen, is there a question?
I think you got a problem getting a vaccine at the lower age, because they're not kids that are coming up with illness.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's cool.
Yeah.
Kids are not the problem. Old people. Me, but I had no fault.
Well, and we'll still have like the nurses, we'll still be, we'll still be concentrating on hand hygiene. That's never gonna go away now, I think that's one of those things that'll be around forever now. But we'll also have the rapid tests for the elementary, specifically for the elementary school students. And we'll have the nurses set their schedules around that. We'll still have the COVID isolation rooms, those kinds of things for the younger students. So, there's a lot of things, I think, health-wise that aren't gonna go away, that are just gonna be good practice, that will continue, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay, any motion to adjourn? Oh, I have a forum. So, oh yeah, as far as the board self-assessment, if you've done that, well, yeah, I would take it. Take it, yeah. What we were gonna do was collate it tonight, but what I can do is collate it. And anyone else that wants to send anything to collate, and we had a couple other things you wanted to do as well that I'll send out to email, ask people to send back, and we'll collate, and then we'll meet. And so just so that you can be thinking about it, some of the other things that we're thinking about is if you could just consider what the maybe five strengths of our board might be in your mind, and then what five challenges might be that we need to work on, and then we can take all that information and kind of put it together and see what we wanna focus on at our retreat. And we're also looking for an outside facilitator, we've got some names that we're looking for, so. And an off-campus site, so we've got some ideas that we're... If you have any ideas about it, please let us, please let us know. Okay, dismissed. Thank you guys very much. And Jane, if you're still online, I'm not sure if you're still online, thank you so much for working to be at this meeting. I know I gave a little bit of a challenge.
Absolutely.
That was awesome, so.